Good evening. Let me go ahead and call this regular meeting of the Real Grande City Gruia Independent School District Meeting to order. It is Wednesday, February 23rd, 2022. It is now 6:33 PM, and we are at the John and Olive Inojosa Elementary Cafeteria. The same J&amp;O in Inojosa Elementary there are the ESEA 2021 Distinguished Progress Award winners. Congratulations. Just had to throw that out there. Thank you, Mrs. Zorita, and your host staff for the hospitality. Thank you so much. For purposes to determine a quorum, let me go ahead and take roll call. Mr. Elizado Velazquez Jr., Mr. Johnny Pope IV, Mr. Noi Castillo, Mr. Basilio D. Varela Jr., Mr. Jay Peña, and myself, Eric Ramirez, present. Let the minutes reflect that we do have a quorum to proceed. Section two, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Velazquez, will you help us with the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution of which it stands, one nation, united in the Constitution of America.
Thank you, Mr. Velazquez. Section three, we have the approval of minutes for the regular board meeting, which was held on January 27th, 22, to have a motion for section three.
I so move, Mr. President.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela, who was second by Mr. Castillo. All his favors so signified by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Section four, public forum. I was handed a Brooklyn City Independent School District Form from Dr. Arturo Montiel from the South Texas College for a South Texas College Board Appreciation. It's Dr. Montiel.
Members of the board, thank you for having me.
Yes, sir.
On behalf of South Texas College Board of Trustees, Administration, Faculty, and Staff, we'd like to present you with this STC gift, which serves as a small token of our appreciation for your ongoing commitment to our many successful partnerships. Each January, South Texas College recognizes the dedication and leadership of partnering school boards for the ongoing support of dual credit programs and other partnership opportunities for students. While the ongoing pandemic has disrupted our traditional board appreciation breakfast, the college has provided small tokens of appreciation for our partnering school district board members. Within the past 20 years, your school district has been a vital partner for South Texas College and dual credit programs. And these partnerships, we can ensure that no student is left behind the education drive curve. We look forward to a continued collaboration. I wanted to say that Real Grande City ISD, Gruia ISD, has won designated dual credit pathways high school and a preparatory for ECHS. But I also wanted to mention that we have more graduates. You have 37 Real Grande City Gruia SC ISD students that earned a higher education credential in spring 2021 despite the pandemic. So we really appreciate you all's ongoing support. And I believe that the word partnership is used loosely. I think for those of you on the board who have a legal background understand what a partnership really means. It means that we celebrate the victories, we work hard together, however, at the same time, we have challenges. But the whole idea behind the partnerships, we accept those challenges, even though they're sometimes they're very difficult to overcome. And I think with the help of the school board, we've been able to do that and continue. And Dr. Rebecca De Leon is our new dean of dual credit and partnerships, and she's done a really great job helping us out continue. So, Mr. Peña, thank you very much for your help. You've been instrumental in this for the board, for your support. Thank you on behalf of South Texas College.
Thank you, Dr. Montiel. Thank you so much. Section five, reports and information. Item number one, report on Texas COVID learning acceleration support, T-Class, Ms. Soto.
Ms. Soto is not here this morning, Board President, Mr. Peña, members of the board. Her father passed away last week, so I think she's with the family there doing the novenas this week, so I will be taking her place. So I ask you to keep her family in your prayers.
For sure.
Okay, Ms. Ayala, ready? Back in, I want to say sometime last spring, TA came up with some COVID relief as far as learning acceleration programs and supports for school districts. So initially, there was, I think, 11 or 12 different supports that we could apply for. So we met as a committee, and we submitted our information to TA for different supports and accelerated supports, and we were approved for... Next one, Ms. Ayala? Okay. So if you look, and I think this is the most important part, the district awards, we got a grand total of $4,474,520,000 in grants. And if you look at the decisions, each decision has a certain amount. So in direct grant funds, we got $2.4 million. Then in addition to that, that was directly paid by TA, we got $1.2 million in the form of either support as far as training, consumables. We've been getting, like for science, we were getting this program called PH Science, and so they'd send us all the equipment for that. So in consumables, in addition to getting the grant, we did get $1.2 million in direct support for those particular grants. Then we were recently notified that we did get Decision 11, which is after-school programs. That is an additional $812,000. So, Ms. Ayala, I said add them all up, what do we look like? So in T-Class, it's a total of $4.4 million that are coming to our district in the form of grants that is going directly back to our students and back to our staff. So if you ask where is this money going and what is it for? One of the, if you look at Decision 1, if you look at data strategy, we get a full-time position for someone called Data Fellow. We recently filled that position at the last board meeting, so Ms. Pat Soto will be serving as our Data Fellow and as our lead on all of the grants under T-Class. So her salary will be directly taken from this particular position that the state saw was crucial and necessary in order for us to get back to where we were prior to the pandemic. So they allowed for those people that received Decision 1 to hire a full-time person, so they will be funding that for the next 30 months. In Decision 2, high-quality instructional material. Basically, they provide products, they provide training, they provide instructional material, and Ms. Ayala will be taking care of this particular award. And this one has print material. When I was talking about the $1.2 million, that goes in that award. You know, it's just an estimated number as to the amount that they're giving us. It could be a lot more than what they're saying because last week Warehouse called us that they received, I don't know how many pallets of just material for the upcoming pilot that we have. Then we will also be getting in Decision 2, a math and literacy coaching positions. It's two for math and two for literacy, meaning anything having to do with E-LAR. So we're looking at four additional positions that TA will be funding for the next 30 months as well. And all of these, again, COVID support having to do with the learning loss. Next slide. Under Decision 3, supplemental, again, high-quality instructional material that is directly paid by TA and its decodable text for learning to read. There's also a dyslexia platform tool. I know with Ms. Ariasola, they're sending, they're like backpacks, they're like packets that students can take home with all kinds of activities that children can use, and those are consumables. They don't have to return them, they're free, the state is providing for the number, for all of our dyslexia students in the district. So we got that award, and that's being paid directly by TA for all of the materials and all of the training associated with that. Under Decision 4 is teacher recruitment support, and this is the one that is going down tomorrow. And I say going down because this is the first one that we have to submit by March 1st. We have to submit who our candidates are. So Dr. Salinas and his team will be working very closely with Decision 4. And what this does, it's very similar to Grow Your Own that has existed at TA for many, many years. We were not part of it, but we are part of it now through T-Class. And what it does, it prepares people that are already working in your district in some form of capacity, working with students that either have their degree and don't have their certification, or are working on their degree and have already earned 75 or more college hours and have a GPA of 2.5 or 2.7, 2.75, and have 75 hours. Am I correct? So that particular award allows up to $18,000 for those students or candidates that are selected. Of course, they have to be employees of our district. So five people will be awarded up to $18,000 stipends for a period of two years to finish their certification or their degree or both. And then after they're done, there's a two-year commitment on their part to come back and be teachers for our district. They would be working for us two years after, but that's why it's called Grow Your Own. So we're looking at five positions, and then one of a person who already has a degree and is in a tested area or is in an academic area and is just missing that certification component. So it'll give them up to $7,000, I think it is, $7,500 for that preparation work, whether it be getting them assistance, putting them through an alternative certification program. Sometimes when a staff member has an alternative certification program, it's very costly, and they incur those costs. Well, this could be offset by that $7,500. And the same thing with the $18,000 for the other candidates. That can be anything from money for gas, money for books, money for tuition, up to $18,000 over the course of two years. So it's a really great opportunity for us as a district, it's a great opportunity for our staff. So we thought we were going to have trouble recruiting, but that's not the case. And talking to Dr. Salinas yesterday, there has been a high, high interest for that. And it's a great program, and we get to apply next year. Hopefully, we do. It's something that's existed for a long time, so there are just opportunities that have existed, but now we're, you know, getting involved, and our staff directly benefits. And of course, our students, because we get to, you know, grow our own teachers. So I think it's a really great program. And then if you look at Decision 6, it's Vetted Teacher Core. And what that is, it's a grant for $400,000 where the state through curriculum trains either our own staff or we can utilize their Vetted Teachers Core. They have like a group of people that are already trained. So we can either use the money to train our folks and put them through modules, or we can hire teachers that have already been trained, and they can do teaching or tutoring virtually. So that is $400,000 just for that. And then, of course, Decision 11, we just received that. I want to say right before we let out for our break, I think it was in December we received the decision, and this is $812,000 for a program for high-quality instructional support. And this is as a result of 45-45. For any student who failed the star in the spring or maybe is not on grade level, the state requires that they engage in tutorial to get them to pass the star. So if they failed, they have to engage in this. So what this is doing, it's providing us training, it's also providing money for us to hire a person to run the high-quality instructional material after school. So what we will be doing is we have to implement by the fall, so our idea is to probably advertise in the summer and then get going by the fall. All of the awards that we've talked about today start from January, it's 30 months. So we have the money for 30 months beginning on January 1st. So that's how long it's going to take for us to... And I think that's probably the most important part of the presentation is the money that's coming to our district, what is it for? And of course, everything, there's different slides to explain the information. Do you all have any questions about T-Class?
That seems like a lot of money.
Yeah. It's a lot of money, it's a lot of responsibility, and it's like I told Ms. Ayala, it's a great responsibility, but with anything, there is a lot of meetings, there's a lot of things that we have to adhere to. But they're great opportunities for our staff and for our students. Our students are going to be the ones that will directly benefit from this. So, you know, we took advantage of everything that we could apply for that we thought. And there was some we didn't get, and you know, Mr. Peña's like, call them, find out where we didn't get this one. And it was because we already had, like, the one we wanted was a P-Tick. And they said, well, you already have an early college. So, you know, we're looking for people that don't have anything, so we scored lower on the point system. But, you know, if it's out there, we're applying. I know that Dr. Salinas and I worked on one last week to support beginner teachers, so we submitted our name. And hopefully, we get that, and that's another $150,000 for human growth and like investing in human capital, which is, I think, crucial at this point, so.
Worst case, they'll say no.
Right? That's the way we look at it. I always tell Ms. Ayala, look, we didn't have it before, so why not? Why not?
You don't lose anything.
Yeah.
All right. No further questions?
Great job.
All right. Thank you so very much, Maria Almores. Thank you. Item number two, Report of National School Counseling Week and recognition of Real Grande City Gruia ISD Councilors. Mr. Rick Solis.
Ms. Olivares.
Ms. Covedo.
Good evening, Board President, Mr. Ramirez, members of the board, Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Adolfo Peña Jr. My name is Ricardo Solis. I'm the Executive Director for Guidance and Counseling, and this month, we get together for February to honor all our counselors and our counseling staff that pay such a good impact and a tremendous impact on all our students. It is through their efforts, their dedications, and their sacrifice that we honor them and we thank them each and every day that goes well beyond their job description. You know, these years have been very difficult, you know, and unique for them, and, you know, we've come together so much through teamwork. And by teamwork, I rarely, I mean the fact that, you know, our fantastic principals, our directors, and our administration, and of course, our school board, the support that have been given through us and the understanding has been, you know, outstanding. And for that, we do want to thank each and every one of them, because it is a team that has to move forward and to be able to thank all our individuals.
Ms. Sol.
We just want to take this opportunity to thank our counselors. I know they've stepped up for all their calls that we've put on them. I know these past times, they've been called above and beyond, and they have, you know, performed above and beyond their duty, like Mr. Solis said. So with all the changes that legislation has brought up, I think they've met those challenges. And you, with your support, we've been able to make sure that we're meeting those challenges. So I'd like to thank you, just like I would like to thank our counselors. And it's not just that week that gets dedicated for National Counselors Week, it's all the time. They're those, they're the heart of a campus. That's basically what they are, and they've stepped up to the plate.
Good evening. And so this year's theme for School Counseling Week was Better Together, and I think that our counselors have done such a good job in showing that, you know, anything can get done when we work together. And like Mrs. Covedo, Mr. Solis said, with the help of everybody and the support of especially you all and Mr. Peña, it has really, you know, been very successful. So thank you. Thank you to our counselors.
Yes, ma'am. So at this moment, we're going to be handing out some certificates to our counselors, and they're going to be going onstage to take photographs, of course, with our board member, Mr. Peña as well. I don't know if you do want to do it individually, if you all want to help out, pass out the certificates to them. You all, yeah, on the stage. All right, so to all of our wonderful counselors, we're going to be calling you all individually, so if you all want to go up through that side where Lily's walking up. And we're going to go ahead and start off with me getting my glasses. With Ms. Arlen Saldania. It's okay, you can clap, you can clap, yes, of course. Ms. Arlen Saldania from General Sanchez Elementary. Mrs. Maricela Garcia from Alberto Encelia Barrera Elementary. Mr. Orlando Guerra from Roque Guerra Elementary. Ms. Veronica Martinez from La Unión Elementary. Mr. Aldo Solis from John and Olive Elementary. We knew very well he was going to get the biggest applause, of course. Very well deserved for all of you. Ms. Mariela Adame from Gruia Middle School. Mrs. Lily Alvarez from Rio High School. Ms. Eloisa Alvarez from Rio High School. Ms. Roxanne Acevedo from Rio High School. If we can have all the counselors not sit down yet, we want all the counselors that we're having stay up on stage. At the very end, we're going to get one group picture. Ms. Rosie Chapa from Rio High School. Ms. Ashley Mills from Rio High School. Mr. Abel Laurel from Gruia High School. Ms. Leonor Rodriguez from Gruia High School. Ms. Iliana Navarro from Gruia High School. Ms. Daniela Almaraz from Gruia High School. Mr. Sebastian Doherty from Gruia High School. And Ms. Elma Campián, our LPC. Take another one, Rudy. And of course, there are several counselors that could not make it this evening, but of course, they deserve all the recognition nonetheless. So once again, to everybody here in the audience, especially our John and Olive Inojosa Elementary, if we can have one tremendous round of applause for all of our counselors throughout our district. All right, that's the end of him. So if we can have all of our counselors get on the stage. If we can have all of our counselors get on the stage. Rudy, John's posing over there. Yeah, if all the counselors get on stage, we'll try to do our best to find a window. We see you, Mr. Peña. Just like they do when we're doing our class photos, guys, find a window. If you cannot see Rudy, he cannot see you. Please find a window. We cannot see Mr. Velazquez over there. There it is. We can definitely see Mr. Pope. I mean, Mr. Pope doesn't, you know, see him wherever. Mr. Peña. Jay, your window's closed, Jay. I mean, you... There it is. Sneak a peek, Jay. Mr. Castillo, we can hardly see you, Mr. Castillo. Good point, Mr. Ramirez, good point. There we go. Make sure you count, Rudy. My, Mr. Peña, have you grown? Let's, Esther. All right, here we go, guys. All right, tremendous job by our counselors. Once again, to all of our counselors and of course, to all of our counseling administrators, Mr. Solis, Mrs. Covedo, Ms. Olivares, thank you for the wonderful job that you all perform every single day at our campuses.
Oh, my training, so well, not to be able to feel what it was like to be tall. It doesn't check you for shopping or anything like that. You know how you come up with products whenever you look through Facebook?
That go, is that a certain...
All right. Item three, Report of the National Association of ESEA State Program Administrators and recognition of John and Olive Inojosa Elementary 2021 Distinguished Progress Award, category two.
Mr. President, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen, Superintendent, Mr. Peña, what we're going to do, we've already individually recognized the staff, but we wanted to share a video that was created by our district and share also with you that we just got back from New Orleans where we were recognized. John and Olive Inojosa was recognized. There's a couple of pictures from the convention. We're going to show a short video, and then we're going to ask all the members to come up and take a picture with you all with their banner, if that's okay.
Very well, yes, of course.
Hello. My name is Oneida Zorita, and I am the principal for John and Olive Inojosa Elementary in Rio Grande City, Texas. At John and Olive Inojosa Elementary, we take pride in everything we do. Our campus was built in 1990 and has proudly served a 100% Hispanic community. Our demographics consist of 98% economically disadvantaged students, 99% at-risk students, and 93% bilingual students. We have a very successful UIL team, an outstanding student council group, and have received a TEA Purple Star designation, and we have been identified as a Gold Ribbon School. Our teachers go above and beyond to ensure every student is successful. Creating a positive change requires time, consistency, and willingness to serve. At John and Olive Inojosa, building a safe and positive school environment that promotes learning are conditions that have been created throughout the years. We have successful students because we have dedicated teachers that believe in their students. students. The culture we have created here is where students, staff, and parents are proud to be a part of. Let me just inform you that this is a very prestigious honor. Amongst 70,000 schools in the United States, 7,900 in the state of Texas, our John and Olive Inojosa was selected by our, the Commissioner for Education, and so this is a really, really big deal, and they've done it for two consecutive years. And I know that moving forward, they're gonna continue, their passion is incredible. I got to spend some time with the teachers and the principals. I'd like to call upon Ms. Marisa Salivar, if you could come up to the front, Mark Olivares, and of course, Oneida Surita. These three principals were instrumental in the reason why John and Olive Inojosa got selected. Remember that these three principals sustained the level of excellence in this campus. The amount of underprivileged students that are here has proven that the will, the pride, the consistency pays off. And let me just give you another side note, when Marisa Salivar was the principal, she received an A rating in this campus. She was one of the schools, or the only school, who spent the least amount of money in tutorials. She was the one sitting in the hallway with the students, tutoring students. This is how special this school is, this is how special these three principals are, and this is how special these teachers are. Teachers, please stand. Thank you. TEA will be arriving early spring to present them with their plaque and a video that they created as well to present to Ms. Surita and the staff. But again, I tell everybody, I want more recognition. I told Ms. Surita, I want the billboard to show, you know, this accomplishment, it's a really, really big deal. And I am so proud as a Title I representative, this used to be the Title I Distinguished Award in the past, it is now ECSA, and so ECEA, and now the nation has recognized this as being one of the campuses in the United States as supreme, as the best. And so again, big honor, ladies and gentlemen, to this school, for us, for the leaders, for the community of this school. So again, congratulations to all three of you, and of course, this wonderful staff, and we're ready now to take a picture.
On behalf of our school board, you know, trustees here and ourselves, central office, we're super proud of the campus, you know, the effort that y'all put forth every single day. Every time I visit the campus, I get chills, you know, just seeing y'all working with our students throughout, day in and day out. So this acknowledgement is huge, so we congratulate each and every one of you for the wonderful job that you do every single day. You know, rain or shine, you're here 100%. Last January, you came back strong to help our students, even though, you know, we're just going through the pandemic. So congratulations, and you know, we've been brainstorming, we think that we should have a parade around the community to celebrate this huge success. So we'll continue to celebrate this huge outstanding success throughout.
That's what I was gonna go with, I said, we agree with you 100%, so we're not done yet.
Nope.
We're not done yet.
Nope.
So, alright, picture, race. I know we joked around about each one of you taking your own chairs, but let's see how we can squeeze in on the stage.
I need some of you all to this side.
Alright, let's see who we can't see. Stand on your tippy toes if we have to, just for a couple of seconds. Alright, here we go, guys. Thank you very much, once again, to John and Olive Inojosa Elementary. Alright, before we proceed to item four, Mr. Azula, let me, I was provided with a list of acknowledgements, and there's no better feeling as a board than when you're bombarded with recognition and awards and wins and victories, and so bear with me, but I was provided a list of acknowledgements here. And I'll start with the Rural Grandity City High School TMEA All-State Band Members, consisting of Maria Garza, Daniela García, and Dennis González. Gruia High School ATSSB All-State Band Members, consisting of Kaylin Salas, Leonel Flores, Daniela Diaz, Christian García, and Jorge Palacios. Rural Grandity City High School Mariachi Cascabel, and the Gruia High School Mariachi Gruia de Plata, each earned a Division One at the UIL High School Mariachi competition, making them state qualifiers. Gruia High School Mariachi Gruia de Plata became the 2022-40 Mariachi TME State Champions for the 10th time in a row. Athletics, we have Ray and Cortinas, who signed to play volleyball at Dallas College in Eastfield. The Gruia Boys Girls Wrestling, they advanced four to Regional Meet in Austin. Real Boys Girls Wrestling, the girls 16-5-8 back-to-back champions. There were a total of 21 boys/girls that advanced to Regional Meet, the boys placed fifth overall, and eight advanced to state. Real Girls Basketball, back-to-back 30-35-8 champions, they're by district champs, and played one heck of a game, came up short, two points short in the area championship game. Real Boys Basketball, have had consecutive playoff appearances in the last three or four years. And then we also have the Battle of the Books District Winners, Elementary Division, Academy for Academic Excellence Elementary, Gruia Middle School for the Middle School Division, and Rural Grandity High School for the High School Division. So it's a lot, but I felt it was extremely worth noting, when I get lists like this, I take the time to acknowledge them, because there's so many, and something we forget. This isn't even all encompassing, but I welcome more lists like this, give them to me, and I'll try to acknowledge them and read them off as best I can, because they deserve all the recognition in the world. I see Coach Pratt, Ray Ramírez is here, so many people deserving of so much. So again, just a little acknowledgement of what has been given, and most of these just happened a few days ago, not too long ago, so congratulations to all of them, thank you all so much. On that note, I think you'll cover some of its due, but it's item four, update on students' staff highlights. Good evening, Mr. President, Mr. Penya, distinguished members of our board, everyone joining us here at John and Olive Elementary, everyone watching us live from the comfort of your own homes on this chilly, actually suddenly chilly evening. It is a tremendous pleasure that we have to present every month, all of the wonderful, and you know what, I mean that word with every sense of the word, wonderful, dare I say, sensational accomplishments and accolades that our students, staff, administrators, and every single department gets on a monthly basis. We get to show it to you all, January was no exception. So now allow us to show you some of the highlights, like Mr. Ramírez just said, we can't, of course, cover them all, because there's just so many, but that's a wonderful problem to have in our district, but here are some of the highlights from January, and we can't wait to show you February has in store for next month.
At Rural Grandity City Gruia ISD, we aim for excellence in every aspect of school life. January was School Board Appreciation Month, and Rural Grandity City Gruia ISD celebrated and thanked our sensational Board of Trustees for everything they do for our district. Mr. Gocha Ramírez, Starr County District Attorney, educated our middle school and high school students about the health and legal consequences of vaping. Our sensational Superintendent, Mr. Adolfo Penya Jr., hosted a special surprise breakfast for our Gruia High School and Rural Grandity City High School Boys and Girls Basketball Teams. Ms. Yasmin Alvarez's pre-K4 class from Roque Guerra Jr. Elementary became the top class in our district for most usage in the Ready Rosie program. The bilingual education, ESL, and early childhood departments recognized the schools who had the most usage and most games in the Summit K-12, Imagine Learning, and Lexia Core V programs. The Rural Grandity City High School Mariachi Cascabel, and the Gruia High School Mariachi Gruia de Plata, each earned a Division One at the UIL High School Mariachi competition, making them state qualifiers. Mr. Ray Ramírez, RGCGISD Athletic Director, was presented as the Athletic Director for the Year of the 36 Annual City of Palms Football Clinic. Our Rural Grandity City Gruia ISD students, teachers, and administration celebrated the 100th Day of School with festive and creative attire, decorations, and surprise treats. RGCGISD showed their appreciation for all of our law enforcement officers and security guards for National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. The bilingual and family education department held a Title III Parent Virtual Academy with Dr. E.T., who is a renowned author, educator, and bilingual advocate. At Rural Grandity City Gruia ISD, we strive to give you, our students and our staff, an experience of a lifetime.
Item five, report on construction projects. Once again, here's this month's updates on some of our projects that we have ongoing at Fort and at various campuses.
Rural Grandity City Gruia ISD is excited to share how some of our projects and renovations are progressing. These projects and renovations range from items that were voted on in the bond election to other much-needed improvements in our district. Gruia High School has updated their putting green with a specialized turf that allows golf balls to roll through, and will begin updates on the driving range for our Gator Golf students in the upcoming weeks. The plans for the new Gruia Middle School facilities are underway as crews have begun clearing the area for the new location. Very soon, we will start to see construction for the new home of our mighty Gruia Middle School cranes. The plans for the multipurpose center and staff development facilities are in the process of being created with input from district personnel, and we have started to bid out contractors for these projects and are excited to see the process. We are continuing to work on drainage at Fort Ringgold, as well as making sure our drains are being cleaned and handled properly. Stay tuned for more updates on current and future projects, and remember, at RGCGISD, we are working for you, our students and our staff, to create an experience of a lifetime.
Thank you. I think that does it for reports and information. We'll proceed to section six, recommending and approving the consent agenda. The board has agreed to discuss the following items, all the items below that are not called out will be approved by consent. Consent agenda item number one, consider and take possible action on donations to Rural Grandity City Gruia ISD. Do we have motion or discussion on item one?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the consent agenda, which would be item one and item two.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Mr. Penya, is there any discussion required?
Mr. President, it would be nice to whoever gave us donations, if they could be basically acknowledged, I guess, who they are.
That is very good, yeah. Good point, Mr. Gortier. Mr. Penya, who would?
That would be on item one, and I think that we have two donations that we're acknowledging here.
Okay.
One is for the Rural Grandity City High School Girls Track, it was donated on February 1st of 2022 in the amount of $2,495.90 from Snap Mobile Inc. And then another donation here that stands out, it's for the RGCGISD Superintendent Golf Tournament One. That golf tournament, sorry, it's for $3,000, it was a barbecue pit on April 11th, and that was from Encarnación Chonito Signs, so that's something to point out, if we could.
He does that every single year. It'd be nice to send them a letter of appreciation for their donations.
Yes, sir.
Alright, so any discussion required, or further discussion on items one or two? There are being none, all those in favor so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Action items, action item number three, consider and take possible action or request for use of school facilities from Starr County Fair Association to host a dinner honoring the Starr County Fair Scholarship Honorees, Middle School Library. I will point out that there was some scheduling, I know that the board meeting was moved, so this has already occurred, but for purposes of thoroughness, we do have to move on the motion, so do we have a motion on item three?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and 10, as presented in our board package.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela to approve items three through 10, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Mr. Penya, is there any discussion required on any particular item? Is there any discussion required on any particular item?
No.
There being none, all those in favor so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 11, Consider and Take Possible Action on Pay Application Number Two for Payment to Hellus Construction on Synthetic Turf Softball and Baseball Fields. Do we have a motion or any discussion on Item 11?
Mr. President, I move that we approve Item 11, 12, and 13 with the addendum that was presented to us.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Mr. Penya. Any discussion required on any particular item?
First of all, let me, the only thing I want to say, baseball fields and softball fields look beautiful. I just wanted to know on the putting greens, where are we at with the putting greens? Because I've been asked that, and that's about it. Fields are, just got a lot of compliments on those fields.
Mr. Ramirez?
Yes, sir. Good evening. The status of the putting greens, I spoke to a lady this afternoon, and she stated that they'll be here next week to apply the turf at the Ringgold Middle School Putting Green. And they're supposed to come back tomorrow for that Gruia. They're supposed to stretch the carpet. There's a little bit, there's a little bit of bumps that we noticed there, so we called them back to come and fix that and add some sand to be able to weigh it down. But because of the weather, they might have to delay till next week, but they'll be here next week.
Are the baseball fields, softball fields already done?
Yes, sir. They're 100% complete.
They're beautiful.
Yes, I agree. Thank you.
Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 14, Consider and Take Possible Action on Awarding of the Following. We have RFP Number 22-29, E-Rate 25, Category 2. It should read Funding Year 2022. And then we have Bid Number 22-31, Two U.S.-Used Semi-Tractor Trucks, One for Rural High School and One for Gruia High School.
Mr. President, I move that we approve Item 14 as presented with some questions.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela. Is there a second to that motion?
No, second.
Second by Mr. Castillo. Mr. Varela, you can proceed with discussion?
Yeah. On the, on the RFP for E-Rate, how much are we applying for and exactly what are we getting on the E-Rate, if I could ask?
Mr. Sines?
We actually broke it down into three parts, one being the switches at all our campuses, then our NOC, which is our Network Operating Center, which is at the multipurpose center, and then our firewall, which protects the district from anything bad coming into the district. On the firewall, we, the current one that we have is seven years old. It's kind of ended life, so we needed to replace it. The thing about E-Rate on this item is E-Rate covers 45% of that item, and the district has to cover 55%. That's why on the breakdown that you have before you, you see E-Rate and then you see non-E-Rate. On the awards, Ms. Sita has the cost of each of the items. The switches came out to $914,867. The NOC, the Network Operating System, came out to $28,000. That's replacing all the network equipment at the MPC. That also is about five years old. And of course, the firewall at $100,000. Total request is $1,043,724. Our district chair is, share?
Share.
Our district share is $203,503. That is our 15% that is, that is due from our part if we get awarded, and that will be coming from the general fund. This is a refresh that we do every three to four years, so we can get the latest and greatest. There's a total of 171 switches that we're going to replace district-wide.
We had already discussed the Aruba switches, right?
The Arubas were our wireless access points. And now these are our switches. There's Cisco gear, top-of-the-line. We call it PoE Plus Plus, and it's going to be state-of-the-art.
Mr. Sines, just one quick question. I've been here for a while. It seems that every time, E-Rate's always switches, switches, switches. Those switches always have to get replaced. I mean, we've been talking about switches forever and a day, if I could.
Right. We get to a point, actually in our district, we have 380 switches.
Okay.
We're replacing 171 with, right now, the, out of the 380, 210 are PoE Plus. The Plus Plus gives a little extra.
What does PoE stand for? And what does a Plus Plus stand for?
It's Power Over Ethernet.
Okay.
So basically, what that does is our wireless access point requires power. Instead of, no, plugging in directly to a plug, to an electrical plug, we put it through the network. And if the switch is a PoE switch, it provides power via a Category 6 connection. Instead of running electrical to every single switch, every single access point, the switch takes care of all that.
So, next question. I know that the federal government requires that we get three quotes.
Yes.
That we get three quotes?
Yes. Under, under E-Rate, if we get one quote, that's sufficient. Reason being, when we apply, when we do our Form 470, which is our application, it's on the web. The thing about Rio Grande, unfortunately, is we're rural. Not too many businesses want to come down to South Texas and do business with us. The ones that proposed pricing, one is in McAllen, one is in Edinburgh, and the other one is in San Antonio. So we have trouble with companies wanting to bid in South Texas, and that's always been the case.
So E-Rate only requires one bid?
If we only get one bid, it's sufficient. If we get no bids, we can actually solicit a company. Example, if we didn't get any bids, Grandi Butane, can you do our work? That would suffice.
Let me, because I know federal requirements are three bids, correct?
Yes.
So it's circumvented, correct?
Well, we did get three proposals.
Oh, we did?
We did get three proposals.
Okay.
The only thing is, one of the companies only bid on one item out of the three, but we did have three. We had Intex Southwest out of San Antonio, Barcom Technologies out of Westaco, and NetSync Services out of McAllen. So we did get three proposals. Intex Southwest only submitted a bid on the firewall. So we had a committee, and instead of breaking it down into components, three components, we decided to do one award. That way, we don't have finger pointing. No, if we have an issue with the firewall and we awarded it to a different company, then we'd have, no, it's your NOC that's creating the problems. No, it's your switch that's creating the problem. No, it's a firewall that's creating a problem. Here, we have one company that will take care of all three components, and it is low bid. All of them were low bid.
Any further discussion? There was a motion by Mr. Varela, there was a second by Mr. Castillo.
One more discussion?
Go ahead, yes.
Those trucks, are those for the band? Is anybody on those trucks? Are they the ones that we want for the Rural Grand City and the Gruia band?
Yes, sir. That is correct. One for each, one for Gruia and one for Rio.
How much do those cost, after all?
The lowest bid one was $29,909.25, and that's each. Both of them from that company, which was Rotex, both bid on that one. They were 2014s. One had 278,000 miles, and I believe the other one had 280,000 miles, and our mechanic did go up and to go and see them.
Do you know, we already ordered the trailers?
I believe so, yes. The PO was already out.
That is correct, yeah.
So we should have 18-feeder hauling stuff next year for the bands, correct?
Yes, sir.
Definitely.
Yes.
There being no further discussion, all those in favor so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 15, Consider and Take Possible Action on Geotechnical Engineering Services for the RGCGISD Faculty, Student Training Center, Addition and Rehab.
Mr. President, I move that we approve Item 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19 as presented with some discussion.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela to approve Items 15 through 19. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Mr. Penya. You want to proceed with discussion, Mr. Varela?
Just on the geotechnical, if somebody could give us what that means or give us...
Mr. Lopez? Or Sita?
Mr. Garza?
Delphino? Two? No? Marie? Mr. Lopez? Okay.
I guess I can start off, Ms. Jimenez, and you can finish it up. It is required before we make, you know, some buildings or go into construction for us to test the soil. So here, we're asking permission. We do have a quote from, you know, geotechnical engineering, and we would like to have that approved tonight so that they can start the testing here at the multipurpose area, sir.
The only question I already had is, what is the student training center? What is it?
Okay, that's the addition to the multipurpose, sir?
Okay.
In our plans, we have...
That's fine. I understand that.
Yes.
That's the only question I already had.
Any further discussion? No? All right. There being none, all those in favor so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 20, Consider and Take Possible Action on Updating DMB Exhibit T Test Approved List of Appraisers. Do we have a motion or any discussion on Item 20?
Mr. President, I move that we approve Item 20, 21, 22, 23, and 24.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Varela to approve Items 20 through 24. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Penya. Is there any discussion required?
Just on Item 24, I know we're purchasing laptops and iPads for student use. Are we going to...
Yes, Ms. Benitez?
How are we gonna, are they for high schools, middle schools, elementaries, all? And how are we gonna, who's going to be in charge of them? Library, librarians or things of that nature?
Good evening, members of the board, Mr. Penya. Yes, this, my voice is too loud. These laptops are for student use. They will be distributed like, just like all other laptops, through the libraries, and they, so far, we have a plan to distribute evenly among the schools as they need. And we still have a need. We have a large number of laptops that are broken that need to be replaced. We have a small number of them that are older that also need to be replaced, and that's the purpose for these ones.
What specifically are laptops and iPads used for in schools, correct?
For, right now, we have what is called blended instruction, so the students do, or the instruction, a lot of it is done in person, but some of it and the assignments and all that are done through the computer. So that is the main use for them.
For in-class instruction.
For in-class instruction, correct.
For what?
In-class.
In-class instruction.
Okay. The age group, I didn't catch, what, what, what's the age group of the students on these?
And this one, these are regular-sized laptops, so we're speaking third grade through all the way to seniors, through 12th grade.
Because some of them are Apple, are they?
The iPads are specifically for pre-kinders, three and four. So we are purchasing 100 iPads and 416 laptops.
Unit price of 300. Any reasoning behind the iPads over, say, like Samsung ones? I know some are like, a little bit better price, right?
Well, we already started buying iPads for the pre-kinders. This is to complete every student. So we started, we bought 550 iPads previously, and this is...
This is to make them uniform, I guess.
Correct, so that all the students have the same device. Yeah.
Although, I'll admit, the Apple products do last a lot longer.
Yes, yes.
I've got...
And we're buying the proper casing for them too, and the protection and all that, so they do last.
No joke, I've got a laptop that's been working since 2011.
We'll disregard the endorsement.
That is not an endorsement. I know it's a fantastic product, but yeah. Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Benitez. Item 25, Consider and Take Possible Action on Renewal of Power School Enterprise Management Service Known as EMS. Do we have a motion or any discussion on Item 25?
Mr. President, I move that we approve Item 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, and 30 as presented in our board package.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Castillo. Is there any discussion required on any of those items?
One, one quick discussion. I know we...
Sure.
On those canopies, Mr. Ramirez?
Item 30.
When, I know we don't have any canopies because the ones that we, they built didn't, weren't good. Is it going to be done during the baseball season, after the baseball season, or on weekends, or what's the plan of action?
Yes, our being communication with both companies submitted a bid, and they advised me that they do have the material in warehouse, so as soon as we approve this item, they'll be ready to go within the next 10 days.
Okay. So how long? What's the protected time?
We'll coordinate possibly before spring break. Right now, I think our teams are going to tournaments in the next couple of weeks, so we'll coordinate during that time. That way, they're not at home playing, so we can construct those two.
So these are made out of steel instead of?
Galvanized, heavy-duty material, pre-engineered, so they'll be, just like our grandstand bleachers at Rio High School, but in a smaller scale.
It's not like they're, they're not going to have cloth like the others.
No, no, no.
Any further discussion required?
And the pending, the pending lawsuit against the company?
I knew, I was going to say that, because I knew Pope was going to ask.
Yeah.
Yes, that's on, Mr.
We've placed both the manufacturer and also the local vendor on notice already. We have not gotten response from either one, so I'll be bringing back, bringing that to the board by next month for action.
Limitations on this one would be two years?
Yeah.
I think so, we would probably...
DTPA?
Be a four-year. It's not DTPA, this is contract.
Contract?
A four-year statute, but we're well within the statute.
But you can add DTPA to it.
And they gave us, I forgot what, 15-year warranty on it?
Yes, on the materials.
On the materials, it's on the contract, on their purchase order, on our request, so it's a 15-year warranty.
But they made a lot of representations, so you've got to add the contractual with the DTPA, signing clauses, statute, you've got to throw that in there.
I guess what we're saying, Mr. Varela, make sure you have everything ready to go for a loan.
Go. Get that money back.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela, there was a second by Mr. Castillo. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 31, Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Action to Hire Engineer for Athletic Department Construction Projects.
I move that we approve Item 31 as presented in our board package.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Mr. Penya. Any discussion required? All right, there being none, all those in favor so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 32, Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Action on the Sale of Delinquent Tax Property. I know we have Mr. Gonzalez from Linebarger here to answer any questions we may have, or do you want to go ahead and present, Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Okay, yes, because I'm not sure we have the information necessary.
I don't remember ever the Calam Linebarger asking permission to sell property. What's different on this one?
It's like one, no?
It's a very usual case. Good evening, everybody from the linebarger. We're authorized to the district to sell property that we take judgment on in our tax sales. Most of our sales are done in public auction. It's done to maximize profit to the district and its transparency to the board and to the public. For example, if it's, and I can't buy property, but let's say one of your cousins or something, we go to the highest bidder. It's an auction process. We do do private auctions rarely, mostly when entities want to buy property for a park or for a water, this water tower, things like that. There's also specific instances when we consider hardship cases, and that's what occurred in this particular event. So what happened in this event, just to give you some background, we initiated a lawsuit on this individual, I don't want to give her name, but on this individual, and there was no contact by her. We are letters, we are knocking on her, on her door, nothing at all after many years. We initiated a lawsuit, we took judgment. Two or three years after judgment, still with no contact, we put the property up for sale. We had people that go out to these properties to put signs and inspect. The property was in such disrepair, we marked as abandoned. Nobody came to the door, the yard wasn't maintained. The property wasn't sold, so it was struck off to all the entities. Later on, it's been many years later, we tried to put it back to resale, it was still not sold because the amount of the value of the property or the taxes was so high. We then got a call from this woman's brother-in-law. She proceeded to tell us that the woman had severe mental disabilities, and she was a shut-in to the house, and never answered the door. Um, she was over 60 years of age, and those are certain things that if we would have known that prior, we would never initiate a lawsuit, because the law states we can't, someone who's disabled, for example. So, trying to figure out what we could do, the value of taxes owed, and I don't know, it's in your packet, but I, I can tell you quickly, the amount of taxes owed on this particular property, um, was, um, I mean, over $35,000. So, the value of the property was $45,000. So it was a little bit more there, I know they're equal, equal, so there was no way for this woman to pay the property at all. So we ran the risk that if we put it to sale, first of all, it would have, we would go to the, the highest bidder, we would start going down in our bidding process, so someone says, "I'll buy it for $10,000," and then we start going up. It could have been bought by any individual, that would necessitate to them the possibility of kicking this woman out, where she becomes displaced from her home. The brother-in-law contacted us, I believe he contacted some people at the board, um, saying, "What could I do? I have $15,000 to give right now. And I promise, if you sell the property to me, I will put $40,000 into repairing the home to make it livable for this woman, his, his sister-in-law, until she passes away, and I'll continue to be up to date and pay all taxes that go forward." So because of that hardship, uh, purpose, I mean, listening to his story and not wanting to displace this woman, we are coming here to the board, I'm coming to the board, to present this resolution to approve a private sale to this individual for $15,000. That would net to Rio Grande City Gruia as the $6,399.89. This resolution went yesterday to South Texas College, and it was approved yesterday. I'm coming here before, um, gentlemen, today to get a resolution approved. Next week, I'll be going to Starr County to get them approved. When all of this is approved, we'll approve the sale, it will go to the brother-in-law name, where he will maintain the property for his disabled sister-in-law, and then we'll go from there. But it's not something we do very often, if at all, but because of the hardship nature of this case, we decided it was appropriate and, and wanted to bring it forward to the board.
So let's say we approve it tonight, and one of the other entities doesn't want to do it, it kind of breaks every, I mean, it stops everything, correct?
It does, all the entities need to approve it unanimously. So we got one, I'm here today on this one, and tomorrow, next week, we're going to Starr County. So I'm asking, if there's any, if any other questions, I'm asking the, the board to approve our resolution.
Is there any way that we can help a little bit more, or a legal way that we, we can help the lady?
I mean, at, at this point, we can't do anything else because it's already been struck off to the entities. When we had it in sale before we even attempted to sale, to sell it, she could have applied, um, what's called an abatement or a temporary injunction to, to stop our sale because she is legally disabled. But because no one ever came forward, it's been struck off to all of you, so Rio Grande City Gruia are now the owners of this property. So I mean, nothing else you could do but just approve a resolution to give it back to her. So we're trying to do at this point, we've been negotiating with this individual, try to maximize, um, anything back to, to the district. So I mean, for example, he could have come with $5,000 or $1,000, where we're like, no, you know what, it's $45,000 owed, you have to come with something a little bit better. We've worked with him for, for at least a year, he was able to come up with the $15,000. So we thought that was something that was, that he could do, that he wanted to do, that he was able to do, and, um, that's the amount we settled on.
In your experience, if you were to go to a public auction, would you have gotten $15,000 for it?
I, I think it would have gone a lot lower.
I think you already tried, right? That's what you said.
Well, we tried twice, and it didn't sell. And in the wor, what I'm worried about is that's, any other person buys that property, and they kick this woman out, they, they never land.
So what are, what are the ramifications of you trying to, or close on somebody who's not mentally well?
Well, they have legal remedies to, to halt or judge, to halt our, our lawsuit, you can't even file lawsuits.
But if, but if the person's not mentally well, how is she even going to know or he know that they can stop this?
That, that, that's why we came in here. I mean, what the issue here is, we visited the house three or four times, there's a gate, we can't jump the gate, we go knock, so the, the property, the grass wasn't, it was weeds, we have pictures of it, you know, since, I think, uh, there was three or four pictures in 2013, somewhat present. It was, the windows are boarded up, the roof, luckily goes falling in, I mean, it looked abandoned. So, I'm very thankful this individual came forward, the brother-in-law, if not, it very possibly could have been sold to somebody, and they would have found this woman living there. It was a very unique unfortunate circumstance.
And one of the legal ways, they, the court does it to protect those individuals, is they appoint ad items, so they can go out there and talk to the individuals, try to locate and find them, but I'm assuming that person had the same experience and couldn't locate her.
It was, there was an item appointed on this case, and...
That's...
The proceeding, the proceeding would be a guardianship.
Well, we...
But they didn't, but they, but they didn't know that she was disabled, so it'd been an ad item first, and then a guardianship.
Correct. For the tax purposes, in our lawsuit, we didn't, all we're trying to serve, we couldn't serve her, we had an ad item, they had let them sign off on our judgment, we went forward.
He just said, "I couldn't contact her, no, no, no address, no nothing," and the, the judge was signing off on it.
Correct.
I think my, my concern would be one, obviously, you know, she's, she has an estate, right? So, in this particular matter, if we, first of all, I'm assuming we have the discretion, right, to, to approve. Now, even moving forward, I'm talking, I'm thinking in terms of liability to the board, if her estate later, you know, comes back and for some reason she is appointed at an ad item, and they reflect back on this transaction of us approving to a private sale, uh, you know, I guess it would be more of a legal question as to whether or not, uh, the board would somehow be liable for making that approval in any way, shape...
Well, Leinberger would be liable.
Well...
I'll point the, I'll point it to Jimmy, right? Right? Because she has no ad item, like John points out, I mean, she, technically, no one's in charge of...
She had it, but they couldn't contact her.
Well, what's, what's going to happen on this case is, the private sale goes through, the brother-in-law will be the other record owner of this property.
Yeah.
So he will be the one that has to pay the tax, has to do everything on this property. I mean, he's the one that can sell the property, he's the one that can, can kick her out. I mean, but he, he's, he's asked to be the record owner of the property.
So he's asked, we're, we're doing it on his request.
Because the property belongs to the entities right now, correct?
Right.
And basically, what you're asking is for the entities to resell it to, so they could take care of the lady, correct?
Correct, yes.
So the liabilities, they've already happened because we already took the property away, if there's any liability.
I mean, right now, the liability is to the district.